Good afternoon, and thank you for joining us for another Beaufort County Council Countdown. My name is Hannah Nichols, Public Information Officer here, and I'm thrilled to have you tuning into today's meeting lineup. The Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting begins today at 3:00 PM, and that'll be followed by our regular County Council meeting at 5:00. For those of you following along at home, just a reminder, you can always view meeting schedules, minutes, agendas, and packets online at beaufortcountysc.gov. For today's Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting, we're going to be able to hear a presentation on the current condition of the Wimby Creek Fishing Pier from McSweeney Engineers. We're also going to be able to see and hear about the Parks and Recreation Master Plan, which I think a lot of residents are going to be really thrilled to hear about. Items 10 to 14 are recommended approvals to either execute amendments, excuse me, execute easements, convey a parcel, or award contracts. The final item on today's agenda is a discussion of possible amendments to the proposed 2024 Transportation Sales and Use Tax referendum. This referendum has been much discussed in committee, at council, at informational sessions, so we're all excited to see what today's conversation might lead to and how this is going to be ultimately appearing on the ballot this November. Tonight, a Beaufort County Council meeting starts at 5:00 PM. We'll be able to see a year-to-date presentation of financial reports for the General Fund, Capital Improvement Fund, and all enterprise funds. Then we're going to have several public hearings and readings on the purchase of property. Item 16 tonight is of special note because that is our first reading of next year's financial budget, and that's going to be followed immediately after by the first reading of the school district budget ordinance. The next two items are all about the commitment of funds for local economic development and education initiatives, and the final few items involve volunteer agreements, estuary system recognitions, and broadband internet expansion. That was a very quick gloss over of what we're covering today. There's way more involved in the agenda and the conversations, so definitely make sure you check out the agendas, the packets, and all of the information available to you at We've also got a couple of announcements tonight. Beaufort County Public Works is going to be hosting a Recycle 101 Talk. This is aimed at educating our community about effective recycling practices, waste diversion methods, and the importance of recycling and preserving our environment. That talk begins at 2:00 PM this Thursday, May 30. It's going to be held at 106 Shanklin Road in Beaufort, which is our Public Works location. RSVPs are required, so if you are interested, you need to register, and you can access that registration form at beaufortcountysc.gov. Just a reminder that May is hurricane preparedness month, so Beaufort County is urging all residents to prepare now for the upcoming hurricane season. The theme for this month is "Take Time While You Have The Time," meaning that this month is a perfect opportunity to see what long-term storm preps you need to do now to make sure they're finalized well in advance of that first hurricane. It's important to know your zone. In South Carolina, state and local officials issue hurricane evacuations based on zones in coastal counties. Knowing your evacuation zone will help you leave efficiently should you have to, and you can check your zone at hurricane.sc. Make sure you prepare your home. You can do a safety check to make sure your home could withstand the effects of a possible storm. So have your roof inspected, double-check your insurance, make sure that if you have hurricane shutters that they are operational. Go ahead and make a list of your belongings and take photos so that you have that for your recording purposes for insurance, and make sure that you update your policy if you need to. And number three in preparing for hurricanes this year is going to be remember your route. So be aware of the closest hurricane evacuation route ahead of the upcoming storm. This will allow for efficient and safer travel out should you have to leave. Once you've learned your route, remember it, stick with it, rely on those blue hurricane signs, not your GPS system. I would like to take a quick moment to thank you for joining us here at BCTV. Our broadcast team is always developing new and engaging content that matters to this area. Beaufort County TV just won two Telly Awards for its outstanding work this year, so congratulations to Chloe G. and Troy Matthews. They won awards for the Murdoch Money Trials and the second episode of Live, Work, Play, which features oyster shell recycling. You can watch these and other award-winning programs online through beaufortcounty.tv or through the free BCTV app available on Roku, Apple TV, Android TV, and Amazon Fire. You can also find us on cable channels Comcast 2, Heart Gray Channel 9, and 417, Spectrum Channel 1304. So whatever platform you're joining us on today, we'd like to thank you. The Beaufort County Passive Parks Department has an exciting nature program scheduled with birding, trail walks, and special events. This Wednesday, they're going to be birding at Whitehall Park, so if you're interested in that free program, bring your binoculars, bring your walking shoes, bug spray, and a water bottle. The program meets at the parking lot at 9:00 in the morning, and you can contact the Passive Parks Naturalist at destiny. rains@bcgov.net for more information. You can also see the entire program schedule at beaufortcountysc.gov/passiveparks. All right, for those of you just tuning in, we would like to thank you so much for joining us today on Council Countdown. My name's Hannah Nichols, Public Information Officer, and we are gearing up for our Public Facilities and Safety Committee meeting that starts at 3:00 PM. That meeting will be followed immediately by the County Council meeting at 5:00. For those of you following along at home, agenda meetings, packets, and full information can be found at beaufortcountysc.gov. Now, on the agenda today, we're going to first hear a presentation on the current condition of Wimby Creek Fishing Pier, and we'll also see and hear about the new Parks and Recreation Master Plan. These are very important amenities to our residents, so we're super excited to see updates on that. We're also going to hear a discussion of possible amendments to the 2024 Transportation and Sales and Use Tax referendum. County Council held five informational sessions out in the community to garner citizen input, so we'll hear about what changes are being proposed, if changes are being proposed, how that referendum might turn up on the ballot this November. Heading back to announcements, the South Carolina Department of Natural Resources is conducting their annual Shellfish Ground Management Efforts, aka Oyster Cell Reseding, at several Beaufort County boat landings. That runs through mid-June. The boat landings will remain open to the public. There will be no disruption in that access, but you might have to go to a different dock than you're used to, because I believe they're closing one dock at a time. Just, we are asking the public to be aware there will be increased truck and barge activity throughout each day while DNR reseeds the oyster beds at those locations. This week and next week, the work's going to be done at the Buddy &amp; Zoo Boat Landing, and then the next two weeks of work are going to be completed at the Eddings Point Boat Landing. For more information on that, you can visit beaufortcountysc.gov. The Southern Low Country Technical Subcommittee is seeking feedback on the jurisdictional Southern Low Country Stormwater manuals. All stakeholders are encouraged to submit their comments and suggestions for improvements. Implementing jurisdictions are working on draft changes, and they would like any and all input on the proposed edits from residents, developers, engineers, and other individuals. Comments on the manuals will be received through Friday, that's this Friday, May 31, and you can submit those comments to wstormwater@bcgov.net. Room's starting to fill up now. This should be an exciting meeting. The Board of Voter Registration and Elections of Beaufort County has announced that the deadline to request and return mail-in absentee ballot applications is 5:00 PM this Friday, May 31. The statewide primary is Tuesday, June 11, and that'll run from 7:00 to 7:00. And you can vote at early voting centers at the main voter registration office, the St. Helena Branch Library, the Bluffton Rec Center Gymnasium, and USCB in Hilton Head. Those early voting centers will be closed holidays and Saturdays, but that's a good opportunity to go ahead and get your vote in if you have a lot going on during the actual primary day. And I think that just about does it for us here for Council Countdown. Thank you so much for joining me, and we hope you'll stick around through the meetings.
All right, y'all. Good afternoon. I'd like to call Public Facilities and Safety Committee to order today on Tuesday, May 28, 2024. If you'd all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Public notification of this meeting has been published, posted, and distributed in compliance with South Carolina Freedom of Information Act. Looking around the room, we also do have a quorum as well as Mr. Dawson online. Can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Brown. Thank you. Any discussion?
Yep.
The agenda will be approved with no objection, and I see no objection. Move on to number five, the approval of the minutes from April 22, 2024's meeting. Can I have a motion as well for that?
I guess I'll make that motion, too.
All right, tab.
I'll second that.
And Ms. Brown for the second. Thank you. Any discussion or objection? As well, I see no objection, and this will also be approved. We'll move on to number six, the Citizens Comment Period. I believe we have one. Mike Hagan. How are you?
Oh, Mike Hagan.
Just come on, state your name and what you would like to discuss, and you have three minutes.
My name is Mike Hagan, and I'm going to talk about the tax referendum. Make this real short. You guys asked your opinions, you listened to what we had to say, you're taking action, and for that, we are appreciative, okay? As you move forward with your discussions to figure out where you're going to go with this thing, I read your four options, okay? I would suggest that you focus on those projects, both north and south of the Broad, that address existing problems, and we all know there's plenty of them, the existing safety and existing traffic. I would ask that you focus on those. Reject any that are simply going to be additions to traffic later on, and there's a couple of those that are in there as well. The need for road improvements is not disputed, but it's up to you to make the decision as to which you're going to put out for the voters, and I think to be successful, you're going to have to be able to defend that the projects that you put forth are the ones that are necessary to keep traffic moving and to enhance safety. That's all I really have to say, but I think those things are vital if this thing's going to be successful, whatever you decide.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Is there anybody else that didn't have time to sign up that would like to speak today? All right, with that, we will close the Citizens Comment Period and move on to number seven, the Assistant County Administrator Report. Mr. Fralics, how are you?
Great. All right, thank you, Chairman, Gunn and Ham, and Committee. Appreciate the opportunity. Today will be very brief. We have a full agenda, as you guys are aware, and then I'm going to say a quick thing and then hand it over to Audra.
Me.
John. So just quick two announcements on my side. As you guys are aware, just a couple personnel updates for you. So inside the Infrastructure Division, there's three departments, airports, public works, and engineering, and we've had a few changes over the last several months. First being, most recent, is public works. So Neil DeStaugh stepped down from his position, and what we decided to do was we knew, or specifically, I knew that that was too much for me to accommodate everything that was coming through on public works. They're one of our largest departments, had a lot going on. I was already kind of helping out engineering in interim fashion, and that was not going to be something I could do for long with that. So what we talked about, John, and administration, was to put out a interim position while we searched for the permanent position. So we did that with the hope that we could get that one filled much quicker, whether that was internal or external, to be determined, and so we put that out, and we were successful, and we brought back friend of the podcast, Dave Wilhelm. So Dave had recently left about, several months ago, six months ago, took a different position, but the opportunity, again, came back to work with the county, and it worked well because he is already a known commodity, he knows the process, he's served as public works director before, so just thankful for that opportunity. And what it's done is helped us not be needy. So we're at a time of need where we need somebody, but we're not going to just hire anybody, we want to hire the right body, and so that opportunity to plug that gap and fill that hole, Dave is serving as interim for at least six months, and we'll see where that, if we currently have the public works position posted and have had some interviews already and are working through that process. The second one is engineering. So as you all are aware, Director Eric Clawson left about six or eight months ago now, and as mentioned, I've been helping fill that along with some other consultant engineers on the interim basis. Engineering is busy, but it doesn't have the same personnel components as public works does, but when Neil left, it was like, you know what, probably need to look and put something fast-tracking that as well. So we use the same process as an interim engineer, or as an interim director and a permanent director, and so we had interviews with that, and I'm thankful. Brian Bauer is our interim engineer. We just had, he started as of today. And so he was serving as the construction manager inside engineer. Many of you probably already know Brian. He's local grown, has engineering, PE, professional engineer, about 15 years worth of experience, so definitely qualified, and again, he will be serving in the interim capacity. We will continue to put out applications or ask for applications on the engineering director, but that helps steady the ship as well. So those are my updates. Just want to give you guys a head nod or a head notice, so if you do run into those, public works director or engineering director, those are folks to reach out to.
Perfect. Any questions for Jared?
I just want to make a comment, if I may. I think your selections for interim are great. Take your time with Dave, you know, as far as getting that position and stuff, but Dave has been a true person as far as where this county should be heading. Brian is really relatively new to me in working with him, but I can tell you one thing about Brian is that if you call him, he will call you back, so I appreciate that about Brian and stuff. Just wanted to make those comments.
Yeah, thank you. Absolutely.
Thank you, Jared.
Well, I would say congratulations to David Wilhelm and Brian. Thank you so much for what you do. We appreciate you. I'm here, Chairman, and Committee. I'm here to introduce you to Tallulah McGee. Sorry, your name was on the tip of my tongue. You've met Tallulah several times before. Tallulah is our Director of Animal Services. She's going to talk with you today about the animal shelter. So you saw some changes in the budget and personnel for the budget, so her budget area increased, and that is because the Hilton Head Humane Association provided animal shelter services on contract with the county, and now the county has reassumed that responsibility, and Tallulah's going to tell you what we do.
Doing well. How are you?
Just fine, thank you. So anyways, you know Hilton Head took over the contract, and then we faced a lot of problems with hiring people, affordable house care, which y'all hear about, and so Franny had a very difficult time to not only manage the island, but also the Okati. So it just made more sense because of the pressure on Hilton Head. We need them to fix the problem, spay and neuter it, so we took over the cleaning and overseeing of the shelter. So, and then, you know, mainly, we're more active with the pit bull placement, once we assess them, and so she's still helping. We're still partners. She still takes a lot of our animals, so we still continue that partnership.
And there was a increase in the, a request for the budget for this, right?
Yes, because, you know, personnel's higher government versus nonprofit, and so, yes, we did have to increase it just because of personnel, not because of anything else. We haven't increased it over probably 10 years, except personnel. That's the only thing we've increased.
I had a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Are you still able to have people do hours from the detention center to help? It seems like there was some talk of that, like people under nonviolent sentences.
Yeah, I wish, and, you know, Mr. Robinson looked into it, too, is that the problem is, which is a good thing, we're not putting people in jail for lack of child support. So majority of the people we got were lack of child support. We did used to get inmates from Columbia, and I talked to, you know, and he, we're looking into that, and then we got an inmate finishing up their nine-year sentence, and they finished up in Beaufort, but we have to compete against other areas. But since COVID, it's, it's like it all stopped. And I know that Colonel Grant has a hard time just having inmates to keep her programs going, but I wish we could. I mean, I don't want people get arrested for me, but it would be nice.
And I had one other question, and we've talked about this, but wildlife calls, you're still getting a lot of, you get a lot of wildlife calls, too, don't you?
Every day, all night. That's why I look the way I do, because I have a raccoon living in my house now.
Oh, wow.
But it's, yeah, wildlife, and again, John and I've discussed it. We have, you know, abilities to bring private funding to build a wildlife resource center, which we've been in discussion for a while, and it is a need. And, and, you know, and I love DNR, but again, they have enough on their plate, so there's nobody to respond. So, you know, I, I, and I hate saying the word "I," but we don't deal with wildlife, so I and a lot of people in the community that I'd love to bring up here one day so that y'all would see all these people that donate hours and hours and money to take care of injured wildlife that shouldn't be, you know, euthanized. They just need to, you know, rehab if this a parent died or whatever. But it is a big need. Oh, yeah, they're great. Well, it's, it's definitely a team effort, and I'm fading. So we need, you know, younger blood, for sure.
You're doing a good job, though. Appreciate it.
Yes, but, but I do want to continue with wildlife, not probably county, but something that I've talked to Mr. Robinson about is that that's my, that, that's a big gap in this system right now that really needs to be addressed. Yeah, okay. All right. Well, thank y'all.
So first of all, I want to thank you again for, Tallulah gave a great presentation in Sun City on wildlife. It was great. She did not bring her raccoon with her, which I know maybe you could have.
I was going to bring him tonight, but.
You should have. I would love to. But anyway, did I read something recently that Jasper County is going to pair up with our animal control?
Would you like, I'll let him address that. Yeah, he had the conversation.
I thought I read it in the paper somewhere or something.
There's an opportunity.
Oh, don't run off yet, though.
There's an opportunity. So Jasper was searching for funding.
Yeah.
For a new, for a new center. What they don't have is property, and what we have is property. So there's an opportunity for us to join forces and for them to build some facility or some center that's close to our facility. It'd benefit us both, it'd be shared services.
Yeah, I thought I read something about it. It sounded good.
I mean, that sounds good. I mean, right across the highway would be Jasper County, right?
That's correct. Jasper's right across the highway. However, the, the site that our shelter is on right now has 13.5 acres of available property as it exists.
The one in Okati?
Yes, yes, yes.
But they were talking about, like, regional.
Right.
Which would, you know, help quite a bit.
Yeah, I think we've all read that in the paper, that the current condition of that one in Jasper. Yes, sir?
Talk to me more about the wildlife center you just mentioned. I mean, picture, so I can picture him at mine.
Well, and one thing, I don't have a slideshow, but it, you know, I put an owl up and it says, "Who do you call? Get it? Who?" But anyway, and, and that's the problem, is people call and they have an injured, you know, the mom's dead, there's baby possums, baby raccoons, and they don't like to hear "let nature take its course," and that's what they hear. And so, and again, you know, we need a place for people to take wildlife, too, so we can make the decision whether it needs to be euthanized, make sure it gets in the proper rehabber's hand, because we have a lot of people that shouldn't be handling vector animals, which are rabies, you know, and so we have to make sure that we're doing the due diligence and make sure there's not, you know, people taking animals they shouldn't be taking. So we can oversee, so, but there's got to be a place people can bring wildlife. There's got to be, because it's.
Just in general, wildlife in general. Now, I do know that, you know, you have places like the raptors, and they're located, I think the closest one to us would be in.
Allendale.
Right.
Which, which means if I get a bird of prey, which we do often, especially with the growth population, of wildlife being displaced, they're getting hit more, people are seeing more things, and so we have to drive it all the way to Allendale, and I don't want to compete or copy what they do because they do a good service, but there's a lot of times I could take an x-ray at our existing facility, see that it just needs to be euthanized versus transported to Allendale. And so we'd have a place, and we, and that's where Mr. Robinson and I were talking about, having a regional campus where we can x-ray ultrasound, because the community foundation gave us those resources, and so we're not wasting our time or the animals' time to transport. We're able to euthanize humanely.
Now, the raptor in Charleston is, is funded by whom?
It's private.
It's private.
And which, you know, again, private, you can make this Wildlife Resource Center a private entity, like a public-private partnership, because there's a lot of people, Dixie, who I hope y'all all know, that was a wildlife guru in this county, and she passed away, and I sat by her deathbed and showed her an idea, and she's always said it needed to happen. So again, I think there's the private donors that know it's needed. There's a, if you do a feasible study, it is a need. It is not a want, and we need to do it. And that's where I think the, the community would come forward and assist to build this center. The land would be nice because it's regional, and we don't have to, you know, build another x-ray or ultrasound component.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if it's appropriate, but is that something that, the idea or the concept is something that she can work on and bring back?
I don't see why not. I mean, obviously, it's nothing we can vote on today without information, but.
You sure?
Playing at the heartstrings, I like. I've used that angle before, too.
I'm bringing Remy the raccoon next time.
I, I wouldn't see why not, though. I mean, people bring ideas for it all the time, but that's the only way to get the ball rolling, is the person that has the knowledge in that to bring it forward to us, you know?
I will, and I will bring the rehabbers with me, because they have been waiting for this day a long time.
Nice.
I will say one thing, though. I'm in search of a dog, so I'm going to need a list, but I'm going to trade it for the raccoon that's hanging around my house. That's what I'm going to do.
Well, she tamed, tamed her raccoon. Lives with her.
Oh, yeah, don't do that. It's not, yeah, don't ever do that. Yeah, it's definitely something I never want. Yeah, you don't want to do that.
I just want a dog.
You just want a dog. I'll bring you a dog.
I appreciate it. Anybody else have any questions for her?
No.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right. We will move on to number eight, then. We have an update presentation on Wimby Creek Fishing Pier.
All right. So last Public Facilities Committee, we talked about the Broad River Fishing Pier, and, and this, we were, this month, we're going to talk about the Wimby Creek Fishing Pier. We've talked about this in years past. We've had some, some due diligence done on this. We, we have maintenance scheduled, not as frequent, but we've done some maintenance on this as well, and even though my daughter just passed the fifth grade, this is a little bit morbid. Again, coming back to this idea, because as we talked about the Broad River Fishing Pier, we talked about that it was on its last life. This one is beyond its life. So this, this pier is in dire need of not just repair, but demolition. And so I know we've probably heard about people trying to utilize the, the pier out in public. Currently, it is closed off the last portion of that, and then the steps have been removed. And so I'm going to ask Brian and Bill Barna to come up here and give a presentation specifically where that is. We did a report back in 2020, I believe, and they can update you on that report and the status, and then kind of give you some feedback for discussion. So similar to Broad River Fishing Pier, if you guys gave feedback on, on what staff to work on, we'd ask for similar feedback after today's presentation on this Wimby Creek Fishing Pier. So with that, Bill?
Before y'all start, Sarah, is there any way that they can turn down their mic a little bit so it's not getting that reverb for them in the back? Is it possible? Thank you.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. How are you doing today? So, see, a month ago, I was in here talking about Broad River Fishing Pier. We're going to talk about Wimby, Wimby Creek Fishing Pier today. It'll be a very similar format. Just talk about some of the history, some of the studies we've done, some of our recommendations to, to move, move forward. So there's a picture of the pier. It's, it's on Wimby Creek. It's an old, it's an old railroad trestle. Ah, there we go. So that's a view of the end of the pier right there in the background, but it's a former railroad trestle that was converted into a fishing pier. It's about 300 feet long, 10, 11 feet wide, and it is partially closed at the end, which Jared had mentioned, due to fire damage. So we did, the, the first inspection was in, in 2019, so we did a comprehensive inspection out there underwater and above water. The deck was in fair condition. The superstructure was, was in poor condition, and that was partially due to the, to the damage with the, the substructure. So the substructure's the foundation elements, the pilings and the vents that support it. There was widespread deterioration and there was fire damage. So I don't know if there was a little arson activity out there or what, but the pier caught on fire. One of the vents caught on fire. The steel superstructure settled into the foundation. I have a picture of that. I'll show you, and so that's why the, the rating of the super, substructure affected the, the superstructure. And then as far as everything else at, at the site that's kind of non-structural related, all of the, the safety fencing is in, in bad condition. All the lights and luminaires and safety features are in pretty bad shape, and there's just some pretty substantial erosion going on as well. So, and 2019, the overall condition rating was, was rated as poor to serious, and that's in accordance with the National Bridge Inspection Standard. So just a couple pictures. A picture in the upper left is a picture of the deck. It's just some, some cracks. The upper right is the portion that is blocked off from use. So just past where that fence is, is where the foundation caught fire, and you can't see it in this picture, but the deck has, has started to settle a little bit because the beams have, have started to, to settle. And there's the fence and the luminaires that, that I was showing you. Those are just basic vandalism on site. And then here's, here's pictures of the, the structural elements. In the upper left, what you see there, that's a foundation element. That's called a pile bent, and so that's a, a forest of timber piles with timber members on top of them, and then this, the plate girder, the actual girder of the bridge sits on top of all of that. The picture to the upper right is, is where you can see that's, that bearing pad, that steel bearing pad should be, should be level. That's where the actual girder, the bridge girder rests. You can see that settlement and deterioration of the bent and the fire damage has caused displacement of that bearing pad. One of the reasons it's so significant at this structure is that in term, in engineering terms, we call this a non-redundant structure. There are two girders supporting the superstructure. If one of those girders goes, the whole bridge goes, okay? So it's, there's no real built-in redundancy to the, to the structure. On the lower left, you see just general timber deterioration, a lot of marine boring organisms and just overall rot, and then the picture to your lower right just shows fire damage. So the fire damage actually extends all the way from the, the bottom part of the substructure all the way up to the, to the superstructure, which is the old railroad ties. They just put a concrete slab right over top of the old railroad ties. And so you have a concrete slab, and then right below those are burnt railroad ties, and then, so, yeah, I think you kind of, kind of get the picture. So when we realized in 2019 what kind of deterioration we were looking at, we worked together with Beaufort County Engineering to come up with an alternatives analysis and say, is there any way that we can take what we've got here and modify it, improve it, retrofit on it, and have it be of value to the, to the taxpayer? In other words, can we keep it open and, and limp it along with some rehab? So we looked at, we looked at several different repair strategies, and, and we always caveated it by saying that any of those alternatives should be, should be vetted against a wholesale replacement or replacement with a smaller structure. And, and it, this is very hard to read on this screen, but we came up with, we came up with several different options that, that could be done with the pier. Everything from a, a complete rehab to a partial demolition to selective demolition, and then we were looking at what was our expected life cycle of those repairs and the projected cost, and we looked at that verse demolition with potentially a, a new structure at a, at a longer period. And, and really, at, at the end of the day, demolition just revealed itself to be the, the most advantageous thing that, that, that the county could, could do. So at the bottom there, that's what it says, demolition of the structure and installation of a smaller fishing pier would, would likely be the best option to, for Beaufort County. So that was in 2020, and then right after that, in 2021, we actually put together the demolition plans and the specifications for the, the pier, and I'm not exactly sure what happened, but that somehow stalled out at, at that point, and so the point we're at now is to come back in and say, we should probably pick this up where we left off, and let's go ahead and proceed with the demo and any other alternative plans that would be out there. So, so my recommendations, our recommendations is to up, update the demolition plans and specifications that we started in, in 2021, demolish the pier, and then explore options for, for improving the site, which is also at the Wimby Creek Boat Landing as well, which I know has also recently been studied. So that, that is the synopsis in a nutshell.
Does anybody else have a couple questions before I do? What would be the?
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
This is Councilman Dawson speaking. This fishing piers in my district, and as the update was given, we all see that this array and the poor condition at this fishing piers, and, and of all the options that, that were, of all the options that were given, the cost to do any kind of rehab and replacement is, is cost prohibitive of, of $1 million plus regardless of what option we take as far as the fall that was given. My recommendation is because of the poor condition and the liability that we, the county, would put ourselves into actually try to repair this dilapidated structure, my recommendation would that, was, would be that we just demolish the whole structure and then start from scratch and build a new, an alternative fishing pier for the citizens in that community.
I'm sure. I've, I've been there. I completely concur with Councilman Dawson. It's a, it is a big liability, yeah.
My understanding, you said there is, it's past the point of rehab now, right?
In, in my opinion, it, it is. It's just, as they say, the juice isn't worth the squeeze on, on this one.
What is the cost for demolition?
Uh, demolition in 20, in 2019, dollars, I believe, we were about 800, 900,000. Uh, demolition in 20, in 2019, dollars, I believe we were about 800, 900,000.
I believe in the 2020 report, it was the same cost to rehab as it was to demolish and build a new one. The new one would be slightly smaller to get out of the deep water, but it was roughly the same cost.
So just looking at your slide a minute ago, looking at that picture, the last one, that boat landing, Mr. Robinson, do, is that one of the ones we have plans to do updates on currently? Is this something we should consider as one project to just do the entire area? Or are we trying to do this piece by piece here?
I know that was a part of the, part of the plan. I'd have to dig into that specifically to see what the needs were at Wimby Creek, but we can certainly do that.
And it would make sense to me, and I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, you guys do this, I don't. But I'm just saying, if we're going to close this down for construction, it makes sense to do it all at once if the funds are there.
Yeah, if the funds are there, it makes sense. And as Bill mentioned, uh, he recommended doing an, uh, updating the alternatives analysis.
Speaking of Mike.
And so when we update that now, the alternatives analysis, we'd look at what's the best use of the site, whether it is to improve the landing at the same time, build a new pier or improve some of the docks that are there. So we'd look at all that and come up with a whole site plan that would best suit the needs.
So I guess piggybacking off Mr. Dawson, I guess our first step is to our administrative staff is to find out where we have the 800,000 for the demo. That's got to be step one for liability. Um, I'm sure that'll be easy for you guys. And then I guess the next part is if we, your staff could get together and start working on what conceptual designs would be for that area and we get some type of cost. I mean, can't make any decisions, so we know anything like that. But if we are in a liability situation, that's something we have to, I would think, address immediately if we can. What would timeframe be from start to finish of a demo on something like that?
Probably no permitting, so six months update plan and get demo. Once we had a contract.
You have to go out to bid.
Pro.
Yeah.
So at this point, is it used or is it closed?
It's, it was in use. I actually stopped, I actually stopped by, um, on, on my way here today to, to see the condition. And the stairs have been removed. But that just means there's a 30-inch drop-off that people are climbing up and over to get onto the pier.
Oh, man.
Yeah, so Jared mentioned, uh, the stairs have been removed. So I think that'd probably be something that we would look at formally closing until we are able to do the demolition just because of liability that you mentioned.
What are the formal steps to get that pier permanently closed until we are able to take action on it?
I mean, you'd probably have the public work staff fencing it off and adding some clothes, signs saying it's closed, so.
Tom, is that something we need to take an action on today or just recommend staff to do?
Just tell the county, I mean, indicate to the county administration that's what you'd like staff to do.
Staff can take that action. So we will, so, um, staff will evaluate its safety and, um, protect the public from that. Yes. We'll protect the, we'll, in the public's interest, we may have to, um, limit public access to that pier for safety. So we'll take a look at that. If we need to install a fence, we can do those. And I will work with the infrastructure staff to evaluate the funding sources for demolition and replacement. We'll come back to council with some recommendations.
And then we'll also take a look at the boat landing as well?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I will add that to that so we're evaluate the, the boat landing needs at the same time. It may be appropriate for us to spend some dollars at the boat, uh, boat landing itself to make sure it's functional and appropriate before we take action on the pier outside of the safety issues. But we'll certainly address those.
So, Mr. Dawson, this is in your area. Is this boat landing highly used?
Yes, sir, by all means. And I was, I was waiting to chime in. Um, I was going to ask, uh, if at all possible, as we move forward with this project, if we could do it, um, uh, independent of one or the other to keep the, uh, boat landing open for the public while we do the replacement, demolition and the replacement of the, uh, of the fishing pier, if at all possible.
Yeah, we should be able to accomplish that.
Okay.
I think so.
Um, I think we would just, the biggest thing for us, Mr. Dawson, would probably just get the funding done at one time. So that's clean and just can get that part moved on. So there's, the public is aware that, one, we have an answer for them and they're not waiting, oh, you're just doing the pier, but not the ramp. If we can get the funding all squared away, then you'll be able to go back to your constituents in your area and let them know. And I definitely don't want to leave them waiting long if we, when we do go close down this pier without an answer of next steps. I don't know what a realistic timeline is to be able to get some type of answers on the pier itself of how long it would take for us to decide when we're starting demo and when we can start rebuilding. But I'm sure those constituents, if it is highly used, are going to want to answer sooner rather than later. So I would think that that would be something we would want to try to stress to at least get some answers to them as soon as possible. If that's possible.
I concur with you. Uh, just the fact of knowing that we do have a plan in place and we will, you know, initiate it, I think would swell some of the, some of the pushback that we might get. But to your point, yeah, well, we'll, we'll do it that way.
Anything else, Mr. Dawson?
No, it, it's moved on.
Anybody else have anything for them? Yes, ma'am?
Bill, any chance you can send your divers down there to find a cache of cash that we could use?
I am the diver, ma'am. And if I found a cache of cash, I would keep it to myself.
Because we're already with the other one, and now we have another one. If you find some, let us know.
We're going to keep you in business for a while, it sounds like, at least.
Yeah, you're on the story.
All right, um, I appreciate it. There's no other questions. This is just a presentation today with some direction of staff, so no action needs to be taken. Thank you, gentlemen. All right, moving on to number nine, recommend approval to council a resolution adopting a parks and recreation master plan for Beaufort County's active parks and recreation facilities. Hi, how are you?
Good afternoon, Councilor Eric Brown, Parks and Recreation Director. How you guys doing?
Good to see you.
Good, good. I'm here today to present a, um, presentation of a, of the final draft of our Parks and Recreation Master Plan. We are excited about, um, our next step in getting this plan approved. And so at that time, at this time, we will bring up Kyle Theodore from, uh, Wooden Partners. And you guys are familiar with her. She came and gave a, um, a presentation before. This is the final draft. And we, um, the Parks Department and staff and Mr. Butts are in approval for the final draft to be approved. And, uh, Mr. Butts and myself will be, also be available for questions if you have any questions.
Thank you.
Hey, yeah, yeah, man. Good, no worries. Uh, Mr. Chairman, committee members, members of council, thank you very much for giving us the opportunity to be with you today. And my name's Mark Baker, Principal with Wooden Partners. Kyle Theodore has served as the Principal in charge of the project. It's very exciting for us to be able to present the final draft of the, uh, master plan report. And we're going to bring up the PowerPoint, uh, in just a minute. So yeah, it's been a fun process and a lot of very exciting opportunities for Beaufort County, as shown by this.
I'm glad you said fun.
Uh, but it's, it has been, has been really.
Some of those public meetings, I don't like calling them fun.
It's fun for him. Someone's going to ask for money by the end of this, so.
Mr. Chair, wasn't this the 10-year plan for 100 million dollars?
About that.
You already heard that one, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, well, you got a water park in here, right?
Yeah, uh, lots of aquatics, yes, thank you. Uh, first, little background on the team. Wooden Partners served as a prime consultant on this project, had a great team of not just local consultants. Kyle and I are local. We live on Hilton Head, but we do parks throughout the southeast and are working on several parks for Beaufort County as well as the city of Beaufort, Bluffton and other, uh, town of Hilton Head and other, uh, communities throughout. So we're, we're here, we live here. Parks and Rec is important to us and our families. Supporting us has been, uh, Next Practice and Pro's Consulting Recreation Planners. These guys are doing rec needs assessments and programming throughout the country, literally throughout the United States. And then ETC Consultant is our survey consultant and data consultant. These guys are, uh, this team of, uh, recreation planners are highly versed in preparing recreation needs assessments and analyzing the data so that it's, um, it's responsive to the community in which we, uh, in which we do the plans for. So we're pleased to have this team.
And, uh, this is our draft report that you're looking at. Hopefully y'all have had access to it. We provided it a couple of weeks ago, and I understand it was, um, made available. But it includes our planning process and documents, the steps that we took as we moved through the planning process. This is, um, the first couple of pages, which is the table of contents. You'll see there are nine items. The first eight are part of the report. The data, the technical information, um, that you may want to do a deeper dive on is actually in the appendix, which is, uh, I guess, section number nine. And so I would encourage you, if you're looking for something really specific, to also check that area.
Yeah, and if you want a quick sort of, you know, summary, do read the executive summary. We would encourage you to take a look at that. But great data, um, in the report.
And just as a reminder, we've talked about this before, but this plan is a dynamic report. It is not a static report. Um, and so it's intended to be used as a guide by decision makers, by yourselves, um, in moving forward um, over the next, well, uh, over a 10-year timeframe, um, for the, for the project. It addresses, uh, sort of where you are today, where you'd like to go, and how do you get there? And it covers things, um, and when I talk about it being, um, a dynamic, uh, uh, report, it covers things that will change, like your demograph, demographics will change, land use patterns will change. And, and so, uh, as a result, the recommendations, um, need to be looked at in that vein.
Yeah, typically we recommend, um, recreation needs assessments get updated on a cycle of every five years. We're really a sort of a living, breathing document. And as your, uh, community begins to, to grow and transition, then you, then you adjust those recommendations. Demographics are a big part of our, uh, process to assess, uh, park and recreation needs. We look at population, we look at race, we look at age, we look at, um, income, and a number of other factors that you'll see in the report. Great data, um, as a baseline. Another part of our report, which is a lot of fun, is the website. Uh, with, there, there was a website on this project specifically, uh, playbeaufortcounty.com, which was active throughout the process, where residents and interested, interested citizens could log on, follow the process, but also provide comments and feedback. Those comments were gathered together with the comments that we obtained during the, uh, community meetings, mini-community meetings, together with the public opinion survey. All of that data was factored in as we went forward with recommendations.
And as Mark said, community engagement was a really important factor in our planning effort. Um, and it started with a series of five, uh, community, uh, public open houses or public hearings, if you will, that were held peppered throughout the county. Um, in addition to that, we held meetings with staff, with Defuski Island. Um, we had a Zoom meeting with the Defuski Island folks, with the Beaufort County Sports Council and with the county's Parks and Rec Advisory Board.
And I might add that, um, there was quite a bit of, um, conversation and input. There was a lot of enthusiasm about this when we went out into the community and a lot of emotion, a lot of passion, um, at these, uh, community meetings.
The process, as Mark mentioned, involved a statistically valid public opinion survey. You know, he mentioned, uh, the website that was set up. It is not statistically valid, um, but the, the public opinion survey that we conducted is and would reflect the demographics and, um, critical information that's applied to Beaufort County. It is, um, within a precision, precision rate of 5.2% and with a 95% level of confidence. Our goal was to achieve 300 responses and we got 351. So, um, folks were even more engaged than we had hoped, um, in providing feedback to us.
And basically what this means is if we conducted this survey 95 times out of 100, we'd get very similar results, uh, which is, um, very adequate and appropriate for this level of study. So the question, uh, questions that were answered by the public, uh, through the public opinion survey were many. And out of that, we gathered the data, we tabulated the data. Uh, this is one example of one of those slides. I might add that, or point out that, uh, we asked participants how they would rate the overall Beaufort County Parks and Recreation Department. Over 78% recommend, uh, recognize the, uh, department services as being excellent or good. So a very high score, uh, there. Now, when we asked them, um, um, what they were willing to fund, um, this is also a lot of, it's very interesting to ask the community where their funds would go. Uh, we have data on that. And then we asked them, um, how they rated the overall services. Wasn't it quite as good? And you know that, um, many of the parts of the county are very rural and not getting the level of service that they need today. And you'll see that in our recommendations going forward, uh, that there needs to be some catching up, uh, going forward. Another part of this study is a recreation programs analysis. We think it's important to understand what the community's programming needs are so that when we build parks, which are the vehicles for delivering recreation service, right? The parks are where people recreate, that we have a good understanding of what the program needs are, the recreation programs and services. So the study includes that as well.
Um, our study also included a detailed inventory of the parks and facilities that the county is responsible for. Sometimes it wasn't necessarily property that the county owns. It may be a facility that you're long-term leasing and operating. But we visited each and every park and facility, um, over a two-day time period. And, um, in addition to visiting, we conducted a detailed inventory of each of those parks or facilities. And, you know, if there was a ball field there, we inventoried that, or a basketball court, or all the component parts that came together to make a park. Um, we also assessed their condition as good, fair or poor, um, as well as its amount of use as being light use, medium use or heavy use. Um, and I will direct you to chapter four of our report. It defines each of those, um, in more detail, um, if you have questions about, um, how those were, were rated or ranked. In synopsis, um, what we, what we observed was that, and I'm not telling you anything you don't already know, but Beaufort County is pretty geographically diverse and large, and it's difficult to cover all areas of the county. So that's a, a big challenge for Parks and Rec. Also that many facilities are suffering from overuse and deferred maintenance. And we heard about that when we met with, um, the community groups, um, that we did our outreach with. That rural areas are underserved due to the, uh, influence of geography and, um, that there is, um, light, medium and heavy use, um, peppered throughout the county. It's not geographically centered in any one area. And I will say, appendix D has the details from each of those inventory assessments that we completed on the parks.
And what we found in Beaufort County is that the sort of interspersing of water bodies and creeks and tidallands make connections to and service to, um, uh, rural areas even more complex. It, it, you may be very close to a facility, but you're across the river, right? You can't get there. So, uh, the complexities of this beautiful sort of environment that we live in also makes it difficult to serve recreation. So we've got the northern part of the county, the Ladies Island, Helen's Island, you know, western part of the county, Beaufort. Uh, but there are a lot of opportunities there and the population needs. The density, the demographics and the, uh, the, the user patterns differ significantly in each of those, uh, demographic areas, geographic areas.
And based on our observations and our site visits, um, we created some, a series of park models that are specific to Beaufort County. And what those are used for is to classify existing parks as well as making recommendations for future improvements or expansions. Um, and, and that's done through level of service, and we'll talk about that in a minute. But they range, the park models range from neighborhood parks, which are relatively small in size. Um, they can go all the way down to a quarter acre, up to 10 acres, uh, to community parks and then regional parks, which are, are the largest of the park models. Examples of that would be, um, like Oscar Fraser Park, Burton Wells Park, Buck Walter Park. Special purpose sites, and those are things that are singly focused. So it would be like a tennis center or the indoor pools, um, that are sort of standalone recreation components. And then natural and cultural resources. And while this, um, particular report focuses on the active use components of recreation, we recognize and understand that, uh, the natural resource parks are critical to Beaufort County. And, um, Stephanie Naj is doing a great job with, uh, the Passive Use Park Program. She's heading up that effort and we recognize that and, and encourage continued support for that. But our, uh, reports and recommendations are going to focus on active use facilities. But our reports and recommendations are going to focus on active use facilities.
Part of the study includes what we call equity mapping, and this is an important part of the study. So as we analyze user preferences and recreation program needs and look forward to making recommendations and projections of need, what we do is, is map every park, and based on the user patterns and preferences of this county, we can begin to say each park type will serve this amount of population. So we use the GIS database to say, how big would that circle be to serve that population? So this allows us to be able to, to analyze neighborhood parks, community parks, regional parks, each of those park types, and begin to see where the gaps are. We also do the same for facilities. As you can see from this map, diamond fields, we do for basketball courts, softball, soccer. So each of those items are mapped out, and we can use that data to begin to help us factor into the sort of priority assessment, if you will, and that's what this slide shows. One of the neat, neat things we do with ETC and, and Next Practice is begin to develop a priority investment rating. And what this is, is a sort of culmination of all the analysis data, and say, where are those highest priorities? And what should they be going forward? If you look at number two there, you guys were today talking about boat landing. Number two, very high demand, and this is, which is not a surprise, basically, because we're in a coastal community, boat, boat lanes, access to rivers. Canoe and kayak and fishing have scored very high in terms of preferences and priority ranking. And you can see the other. And basically, what we do is say that everything above 100 gets the high priority. Then you have a medium priority and a low priority. That doesn't mean those other facilities shouldn't be addressed, but as you begin to look at investments going forward, those are your higher investments. We do the same thing for recreation programs and services. And you can see the high priority, medium priority, and low priority rankings there that then inform our level of service ranking. In the old days, we used to do recreation, the industry used to do recreation needs assessments based on national standards. That doesn't work, because every community has a different way to recreate, different desires for recreation, different user patterns and preferences. And so all of the data that we've talked about today helps us develop a unique level of service and a set of recommendations for every facility.
And the priority investment ranking that Mark just shared with you is based on the statistically valid public opinion survey, and hopefully is giving you raw data that you can use as you move forward with your decision-making in prioritizing funding and, and other improvements to the system.
Can we, can I ask a question about?
Yeah, I have one too, so go ahead.
Can you go back to the previous one?
Absolutely, yes.
No, the next one, I'm sorry. The one where you put need exists.
The level of service?
Yes, the level of service.
Yes.
So the red, if I'm understanding correctly, is where we're underserving.
Yes, ma'am, yes.
But like, some of these, we're, we're meeting the standard, like in a source.
Today.
That is correct, yes.
But it looks like we have a lot of red.
Yes, and you'll see that in the, in the recommendations going forward. Yes, was there another question?
I had one as well. Could you go back two slides? One more. So, I'm like you, when you start this conversation, the one thing we all knew, so if I'm reading this right, it's showing that there's more parks and recreation centers in north of the broad than south of the broad. But we're saying we're not meeting the needs in north of the broad, even though we have more centers.
That, um.
Unless I'm reading that diagram wrong.
What we're looking at there is one category. Let's take neighborhood parks, for example. If you look at those three neighborhood parks in Sheldon Dale and Belvico, and you go in and you analyze those facilities, those facilities are very light. They're old, and in, in many cases, in need of funds. Now, one of the things that you'll see in our report is specific recommendations for every one of these parks.
Okay.
And it talks about what needs to be improved. Now, if you go to the Ladies Island side and St. Helena, you'll see the same kinds of things. So when we get over into that quadrant, we see that there's a greater population. But what's happening is that the lack of facilities that are similar to what you have in Beaufort and in Bluffton leave some gaps. So the fact that you have a neighborhood park there doesn't necessarily mean you're meeting the need. What's in that neighborhood park? How well is it maintained? And the other thing is, where should neighborhood parks be that would allow you as a council to appropriate staffing and programming? So there has to be enough density and population to support programming and staffing and maintenance for those facilities. So just the fact that there's a park there doesn't necessarily mean that it's serving your needs in the best possible way. So if you go drill down into the next thing that we're going to show you, which is what happens in each of those parks, that's where you begin to really sort of, that's where the rubber meets the road.
And let me point out one thing that hasn't been mentioned about these equity maps. There are two colors of circles.
That was just my next statement, yeah.
There are brown circles, which are, we, we are recognizing that some other recreation providers are providing recreation facilities or services. The green represents what Beaufort County is currently providing. And so there's a differentiation between what the county's responsible for and what other folks are providing.
So if you take this same map, and you look at it for regional parks, passive, you know, all of the different park categories, you begin to see where those gaps are. And then you look at the recreation programs and the priority investment ranking, and you can begin to come up with the recommendations that you'll see in the slide going forward. And that is where we really do begin to apply all of this data as we, as we go forward. Now, another interesting opportunity that Beaufort County has is sports tourism. We happen to be in an area that's highly desirable for sports travelers. People will come here. So as you build facilities to meet your citizen needs, the question that was asked of us is, are there opportunities to, to tweak those facilities a little bit so that they can also function as sports tourism facilities and generate economic impacts for your business community? If you have a tournament in a, in a facility, your restaurants and your hotel rooms are going to benefit. So there's a definite business, business benefit that many communities have recognized. And we go into communities like Florence and other cities, Spartanburg County, where they're inland and don't have the coastal resources, or actually building recreation complexes specifically geared to sports tourism. Here, I don't think you need to do that. But if you take Burton Wells and Buckwalter, for example, and you tweak those a little bit, they're great host sites already, but they're meeting your resident needs. So there's a way to do that. And there are other things that we found with this study, and I'll touch on those in just a second. But we met with Beaufort County Sports Council, Greater, the Greater Beaufort Port Royal Convention and Bureau Center, Sciaklin Sports Alouds, Sports ETA, and other staff. Obviously, provided very important input. We looked at Buckwalter and Burton Wells as it related to tournament opportunities there. And there's already some things happening that are being planned. At Buckwalter, for example, there's new artificial turf, which is being planned and developed for that. And so as you look at these recommendations, and then we analyze the impacts as it related to team sports, and then archery, beach volleyball, pickleball, and other things. What we found was that in the rectangular sports opportunity, there's soccer, rugby, and lacrosse. And then in the diamond sports, obviously, baseball and softball. What's interesting is that there's great opportunities in the market today for providing facilities where you can host regional events for archery shooting, beach and sand volleyball, sports glam, I mean skateboarding and BMX road cycling. Those facilities, those opportunities for competitive venues are not as well-developed as the baseball and softball, because there's been a huge trend over the last two decades in bringing on big tournament softball and baseball complexes. There's some opportunity for that here, because you already have those facilities, and you can double up. Fraser Park, for example, in, in Bluffton, has been the host site for Dixie Youth Baseball for, for many years. They're taking advantage of an existing facility that's meeting the citizens' needs, but it's also benefiting the tourism strategy. So there's some great opportunities for you there.
Our final recommendations focus on what we heard a lot of from the community, and that was, we need to reinvest in what we currently have and bring it up to snuff. So our recommendations are very highly focused on improving existing conditions in existing parks and facilities. Again, as I mentioned at the outset, this is a 10-year report. We're not focused on a big number today. It's something that would be phased in over a 10-year timeframe. But bottom line, our recommendations for neighborhood parks are in the 9.9 to 11.3 million dollar realm. Community parks in the 37.9 million dollar realm. Regional parks, 38 million. Special purpose parks, 7.1 million. So, to your point earlier, we're under 100, 100 million.
Not by much.
But, but, but we're between 90 and 95.
Yeah, so what, what we found is that there are significant needs in the county. But we think we can meet those needs at your existing parks, for the most part, with a little bit of land acquisition to expand a couple of those park sites, rather than going and building entirely new parks. But there's a great opportunity to infill and to upgrade and improve those facilities at your existing sites. And if you go through the report, you see very specific recommendations about what happens on every one of those sites to meet the needs. So yeah, with that, we want to open it up for questions.
Any other questions?
I just want to say thank you very much for your passion. It's incredible. I was at an event last week, a youth event, three maps I had up, poster size. One was incorporated, unincorporated Beaufort County, the whole. The other was the bridges, and the other was the parks, active and passive, in green space. And by far, that was, that these kids loved learning about that scene, that helped me as well. But thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Thank you.
Glad to.
Mr. Dawson? On mute, my friend. You're on mute.
I'll take it until he get off mute.
Yeah.
You're still on mute, Gerald.
Go ahead, Mr. Glover, we'll come back to him.
Oh, okay. Just, just a couple of comments. Appreciate the report itself.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been a long time waiting for the final report, so it's here. So we want to say thank you to that. And you talk about the neighborhood parks and community parks. Most of those are my area. There, I do have a natural park there too, so Fort Fremont and stuff.
Yeah.
Needing a lot, and the community's been asking for a lot. And I don't know, Gerald raised a question about a month or so ago. And his question, and, and he may want to ask this question, so I'm just going to ask it just in case he doesn't get in.
Okay.
A lot of the younger people, the older people, I think we're going to take care of them, because they're going to come and ask for services. Pickleball is a classic example of that. Younger people, what are they, what are their concerns, or what would be recreational for them?
Right.
You know, the old traditional baseball, basketball, is that still good?
What, now, when you say you.
And then let me throw this in there.
Right.
You know, we got, we have, we do have several swimming pools in the county, but never saw any move toward like a swim team.
Right.
Competition, et cetera, et cetera.
Yeah.
So, I was asking the consultants, I didn't know I was going to get the head chief. Go ahead.
Yeah. Yeah, because they, they put, they put the plan together. So when you start talking about what the recreational needs are when it comes to our children. So we had a meeting last week with the school board. And one of the things we've done was, we created a shared use agreement. So I'll be in front of all of the principals in, in Beaufort County in the next couple of weeks. I know one school is out. And then we're going to go over those needs, and we're going to have shared usage. And that's one way of bringing our kids in that may not want to do soccer or football or basketball. So we're going to bring them in through going, we, we both, the school board and the Parks Department, we share the same thing, we have kids. And when they're out of school, they're at parks. And when they, when they, when they're in school, they're in school. So we're going to have shared usage. So when the schools are open, they'll use the parks. When the schools are closed, the parks will use the schools. And so we're going to get together, create this agreement. Thank you, Brittany, because I think it's done, and she, she will be presenting it to the school board. And so once that happens, we'll go in and survey and say, you know, there's a tutorial program here at Lynn Brown, or there's this program going on here. And so we also, I also have a staff person that will be going over to the island so that those gems can be utilized with different programs that you may not see there now. So the first step has already been, already, has already gone forth. And that first step is, we're getting into the schools where we're going to, where our audience is. And so that's one of the steps we've already taken.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay. You fine, Mike?
Mr. Dawson's ready.
All right, let me finish there, Gerald, and then you got the floor. One of the comments you made about is constraints. And in that, especially in the rural area, but you, you mentioned going to the schools. So that may be a means of getting kids to a site through the schools on their buses. A lot of our parents, unlike Bluffton and Hilton Head, who are taking their kids to these different play areas and stuff, our parents are working, and so they don't have the access, et cetera, et cetera, for the students to get there.
So, so what we've done at Lynn Brown, and that will be our model site for recreation for all of our other sites that didn't have summer camp, aftercare, and those different programs, karate classes. And so what we've done is, we're going to create something, Survey Monkey. And if parents don't have access to a computer where they can go on and do the survey on what the needs that they want to see met, we'll put boots on the ground to make sure that we're in those neighborhoods, finding out what are the needs of our, our kids. Now, my first week here, I, I went through a fine comb, fine tooth comb with this, with this, with this plan. And I've already prioritized every facility that we have, every park that we have, based on the usage, based on, does the county own it? So if the county does not own it, and we're going to put a million dollars in there, I need at least a 30-year, 40-year agreement, because that's saying I'll get my lifespan out of what the county is going to invest in. So there's a whole, and I'll come to another community meeting, because there's a whole lot that plays a picture into what we're going to do. First thing we have to do is, we have to program these places that don't, that have low programming to make sure that we don't put 50 million, or, I'm, I'm thinking out loud, y'all. We don't put a million dollars into something, and then, 50 sounds good to me, too, into something that we may not be able to get the, you know, the benefit of our buck. So we've already started that process, based on the plan that's before you guys today. We've already started the process of bringing on more staff. We've already started the process of putting staff strategically in places that they need to be in so that we can be successful in accomplishing recreation.
Okay.
Mr. Dawson?
Yes, going back to the recreation centers that are north of the broad and underserved in the rural communities, I, I, I may have overlooked it, but I heard the presentation today that mentioned several rec centers, the Dale, the Belvico, and I didn't hear, and the Burton Wells, Dale, the Belvico, Burton Wells, but I didn't hear the Bookie Two Washington Center mentioned in this presentation. So I just want to make sure that the consultants and us, our staff include the Bookie Two Washington Center in all of these rural centers.
Yes.
I just heard our director mention that he, he's got all of the centers in sight. So I just want to make sure that, that we, make sure we got Bookie Two Washington included in there.
We did, and due to the limited time that, you know, we didn't want to take up your entire evening, we, we used some examples, and those were nothing more than examples of some of what's included in the final report.
But those, but those are, recommendations are included for those centers, yes, sir?
Yes, sir.
Okay, good enough.
I have a question.
Yep, Alice, go first.
I wanted to commend y'all for the public meetings you had. I attended two of them, and they were interesting, and, and quite a lot of input.
A lot of emotion.
And a lot of emotion, and, and will, and also waited for years for this idea of shared facilities with the school district, and you are to be commended, and Dr. Rodriguez. with the school district and you are to be commended and Dr. Rodriguez because I remember there was a track that was off limits for people to walk on because it was on school property. Um, and that's such a shame and I'm so glad that legally we can do this, um, and, and use these facilities. They're sitting there all summer vacant.
And why not?
And why not? And for other things, practice and other games. Thank you.
Tab?
So, I want to talk about the school district too. I think that's a good collaboration. Um, early last year when we came on the new people, we were charging the school district to use our ball fields.
Right.
Okay, so that, that's we went away from. So, I think it's great. We're going to collaborate with the school district. And I'm an educator at heart, so I understand about after school activities and so on. My other question is, how much did this differ from the, the report you gave us last year?
Um, it's
Other than it's shorter?
Nah, well, yes. Um, the bound report, um, has not changed, uh, or has changed very little. Uh, the presentation that we made to you tonight is a summary of what we made to you last year. That was about a hundred and two slides. It took, I think, almost an hour and a half for us to go through. Uh, so thank you for your patience, all of you for going through that. We gave, drilled down to, into a lot more detail there. Uh, this is sort of the executive summary of that, but, but the report and the findings of the report have been refined and finished, uh, but really no substantial change.
It's a slight decrease in the amount of money. It was, it was a hundred million flat last year.
Was it?
Yeah, you're under.
Okay.
But here's my other question. Do we have, maybe this is from Mr. Brown. We have the list of priorities to look at because somewhere we're going to have to get some funding.
Well, yes, you guys have, you guys, you guys have the whole entire plan. And so, as a recreator, we go in and we do, and we can come back to you, but I don't have anything to share with council as far as my priority is concerned when it comes to recreation. But what I do know is that, um, the Book of T. Washington's and those sites over there is priority to us. We actually have a playground that's going to go up at Scott's Park because we just had to because of, um, some issues that, some, some legal issues that may come about with the playground, you know? So, there are some things that are happening now in those areas as far as programming. We're looking to actually put staff in those areas, um, so that we can see the need. And then we also looking for volunteers in those areas that would actually work with us. Um, because, you know, when, when you go to Book of T. Washington, you're almost in Charleston and my, my parents are from Charleston. So, I feel like I can go home, you know, when I go to Book of T. Washington. So, we want to make sure that we, um, meet those needs by getting with the residents and we've started that already. That process have started. So, yes, we're, we're, we're looking at different ways of going in and we're prioritizing them based on what the plan has already given us. And see, the plan, one thing the plan has done for us that was, that I, that, you know, I did a master plan a few years ago back in Florida, but one thing the plan does for us, it tells us the participation of the community. So, it lets us know you don't just go put a million dollars somewhere where there's, but typically the participation is only five percent. We, as a staff, go in and try to get creative to say, how can we get that to come up to what we want to actually put here? Or how can we get those numbers to rise up to what we actually want to build in this, in this community? So, I'm educating the, the, the communities and I'm actually sharing those things with them. I'm sharing, um, different types of strategies that we can, um, use in order to get recreation out. Some of those areas, you put a grill out, you put some tent, some, some tables out. Um, you give them the amenities, um, that they need because that's what some of those areas may need. And that's, and we've actually started that as well.
And I noticed in, Mr. Robinson, in your biweekly report, we're buying playground equipment. I don't remember which playground.
Scott. Scott.
Okay.
Yeah, Scott Center.
So, yeah, I noticed that in the report. All right, thank you. I'm interested in the whole priority list.
Once we, once we, um, really fine tune it and we can get with, um, you know, I can get with, with Mr. Butts and we can sit down and we can collaborate as far as, um, dollars that we may want to ask you guys for in the future, we're prioritizing that way based, based on the need and we're starting out in that area first.
But right now it's not included in the twenty-five budget?
Right.
Okay, just one.
Can we make a motion now?
Mark.
Real quick, I know this is taking longer than normal, but in the long-term plan that you've got, I mean, obviously a, a big part is, is making some of these fields, and I might have missed it, but, uh, making them all-purpose fields when it comes to all-terrain surfaces so they can be used from six o'clock in the morning till ten o'clock, o'clock at night, so.
So, that was a meeting we just had with the new, um, Buck Walters fields that's going up. They all will be all-purpose. Moving forward, everything we do will be all-purpose because we want to get the, get our big bang for the buck when we can use it for multiple, multiple sports.
When I say all-purpose, I also mean
Artificial turf, yes.
Turf and
Yes.
So, that should just be, okay, good.
Our firm is actually doing
If I might chime in again?
Art, you're first. Uh, yes, Mr. Dawson, then we have to wrap it up. We still have quite a few items in the executive session.
We, we talked about activities for children particularly during the summer, uh, time that is needed. And I know, um, water slide or splash slides are, are in this plan. And I think we just need to, um, follow up on that and make that a priority as well because, um, we need to, we need to provide some type of entertainment to keep some of these children off of the street. I mean, uh, it, it won't solve all the problems as far as the street problems are concerned, but definitely we need to give them some, some activities. And I think the water slides and splash slides is the way to go.
Good point. Thank you. All right, um, just to wrap it up real quick then, um, before we take a vote here. It, it sounds like we have, there will be, I'm sure. I, I would assume you'd probably make it in a second, Mr. Glover. Our, it's a little surprising, I guess, for me and probably Mr. Dawson, Mr. Glover and Ms. Howard that there's really no recommendations for new centers, which us four were pushing in our areas to talk about a new center itself. So, that's really interesting and it seems like there's a ton of questions from everyone. Um, I think the best route to go from this point for here as, and council, um, is to actually set up some type of workshop this summer where we can actually have this full-length conversation and put aside multiple hours for this. So, it gives us time to dive deep into all hundred and some pages.
I, I know you want to wrap it up, but this is a living will, so although you guys are approving it, it does not mean that we can't go back and say we want to add new facilities somewhere because we now have, you know, GOB money or we have monies to do that. So, it's a living will, so we can always add those things to it.
Yeah, we can always update the master.
Right.
And there are new centers in, um, the parks that we were recommending.
Okay. Um, so with that said, I would like to try to get something on maybe this summer and so we can get a workshop done so we can have, give staff enough time for, uh, to prep for the next year coming up to see what kind of budget we have that we can put towards, um, parks and recreation to get that thing cleared up before the end of this year. Um, same philosophy we kind of have with the transportation referendum. Let's get it done before the end of the year so we're not behind the eight ball before it's too late. So, if we could get that on the books, that'd be great. Um, can I entertain a motion to approve the, uh, master plan?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Ms. Brown. Thank you. Any objection? And we have already had conversations, so this will be approved with no objection. Thank you all, and, uh, hopefully you guys can come to that, um, workshop as well.
Happy to continue working with you any way we can.
Perfect.
And assisting staff with, uh, priorities going forward.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, y'all, we have multiple household items that we just have to do, um, to get through here until we have one more, um, big discussion we're going to have to have here at the end. So, moving on to number ten, recommend approval to council and ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute the necessary documents to convey utility easement number nine zero four zero nine one encumbering property owned by Beaufort County. Do I have a motion?
I'll make the motion. That's in Shell Point area, um, Mr. Chairman.
I'll second.
In a second. Do we have any discussion on this? It is already in the backup documents as well. Any objection? Number ten will be done with no objection. All right, number eleven, recommend approval to council and ordinance authorizing the acceptance of drainage easements associated with the drainage systems located in Shell Point area on two parcels. Um, the numbers there are both listed. Do we have a motion for that as well?
I'll make a motion to, um, for these easements to go forward to full council.
And they're second?
Do they have to go to full council?
Yeah.
They will, yeah.
No, I'll second that.
Second, and as far as I look, this has, um, no fiscal impact?
No.
Right.
That's correct. Um, any other questions? Number eleven will also be approved without any objection and I
I'd like to thank staff like Ms. Wilson for working on these easements and the stormwater people. These are not, you have to work with owners.
They're not easy to get done, that's for sure. We just saw that a couple of months ago.
Yep, thank you.
This will also be done with no objection. Moving on to number twelve, recommend approval to council and ordinance authorizing the conveyance of a portion of parcels, of two parcels listed, of real property from Beaufort County to the city of Beaufort associated with US twenty-one airport area and frontage road improvements.
Send it to this chairman.
I'll second.
Motion by, uh, Mr. Rattomuun, seconded by Mr. Glover. Any discussion on this one as well? Jared, this is just the frontage on the front of the airport itself?
No, this is associated with the road project, the airport frontage road, um, across from Walmart that we just completed. And so, the city gained, uh, the city is a road that we built it. The city is maintaining it and there's two slivers of property that the city, uh, that were associated with it that we had to procure. And now we're deeding it over to the city, much like we deeded other properties over to DOT.
So, they, they'll be in charge of maintenance of those roads after they are deeded over, correct?
That's correct.
Perfect. Any other discussion? This will be done with no objection. And I see no objection. Number thirteen, recommend approval to council and ordinance authorizing the interim county administrator to execute any and all necessary documents for the acceptance of properties encumbering the road right of way for private section of Shepper Lane.
I'll make the motion, Mr. Chairman. This is next to, um,
Beaufort?
Beaufort Middle.
Beaufort Middle?
Yeah. A second.
In a second. Any discussion about this one? Is this the road we were discussing earlier?
Yeah, this was, what we came for previously was the acceptance of the road and this is actually the ordinance to, um, formally convey the property from the private owners to the county.
Okay. Uh, Mr. Dawson, do you have any questions on this one?
Yeah, um, how many houses on this, on this, uh, on this road?
I think there's about
Ten or twelve.
Four. Altogether on the entire road. There's four on this section.
So, are we taking, uh, ten of them in or is it just the, the four?
Just the four. The remaining section of the road is already under DOT ownership. And so, this section would be county-owned, um, for an entire publicly-owned road. We coordinated with the city and DOT, um, and neither of those were moving forward with any type of improvements.
And the reason behind this, Mr. Dawson, and you and I discussed this at great length, is the use of our public school buses going through this road and that's what's putting on the wear and tear of the citizens' road.
Yeah, I can remember that. Okay, good. I'm good.
Awesome. Do we have any objection to move this forward?
No.
I see no objection and this will also move forward as well. Moving on to number fourteen, recommend approval to council to award the contract to Coastal Air Technologies for IFB zero five zero seven two four, Beaufort County Disabilities and Special Needs Office HVAC replacement. Do I have a motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
A second?
I'll second it.
And I see the fiscal impact is, um, going to be two hundred, two hundred thousand?
Yes.
Yep, so this will have to go to full council as well, correct?
I have a question.
Absolutely.
There's only one bid?
That'd be my next question.
I'm ready for your question. Yes, there, this was a project that's part of a long-term maintenance. This is an outdated, so I'm not answering your question, but I'm going to answer your question.
That's okay.
For the DSN building that's just off Castle Rock, uh, we've done a lot of other improvements and this is an outdated geothermal system that's very loud and inefficient. But unfortunately, there was just one bid. So, in the last few days, I've dug in deep just to see what was the engineer's recommended price and estimate and it was in the low one thirties. The bid came in at one eighty-six. And so, my first question, as you would probably ask the same question, is why? What are the specific differences? And some of the things are equipment estimates, uh, some more money for labor. When I say, th- these are little three and five thousand dollar differences that add up quickly. It is, uh, removal of some of that old geothermal piping. It is tying into that old geothermal piping, so it is kind of a specialty contractor. Not everybody works with geothermal systems. But at the same time, I'm not here to defend one company or then, or not. And this system does work. It is old, loud and inefficient. But if you would so choose to want to go back out, you could. But at the same time, this is what the bid is that we received on the street.
How, how long is that bid out?
The standard thirty-plus days.
How long is, or how old is the existing?
I don't know. I, I did not get that information. But it is operational today. It's not the best. So, it's not a situation that is an emergency procurement. So, that's why I wanted to throw that out there, that it's not, if, if you were to feel so, would feel better to do it, another way we could do that.
I would prefer we try to get more bids. One bid is, that's as factor to me.
That's seventy-five over what the engineer?
Yep.
When was the original, um, estimate given to us?
Within the year.
Of one, the low one thirties?
Right.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion to approve or deny?
There was a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor.
So, that's true. So, I guess we have two different options we can take with this. We can either turn this down with a vote or we can send this forward to county council and decide at county council with more discussion there if we gain more information about the exist, um, the life expectancy left on that
Right.
HVAC system and discuss what other options we could to put this back, back out the bid.
That's a good recommendation. While, while I said it's still operational, it is at the end of the useful life and that's the only dicey portion.
I'd, I'd suggest moving it forward to county council, but maybe coming and having
Get some more information.
Yeah, get some more information for it.
I will.
Can we move this forward with no objection? All right, this will move forward with no objection to county council. Thank you. All right, number fifteen, Jared, you ready? Discussion of possible amendments to the proposed twenty twenty-four transportation sales tax, transportation sales and use tax ordinance and referendum.
That's right. Thank you. So, this is a key word, discussion. This is not a presentation. This is a discussion. And I would actually change the word from discussion to a workshop. So, this is not going to be Jared talking. This is hopefully going to be you guys talking. Because you guys have been participants as well as myself, um, on the five informational sessions that we had throughout the county. And so, all I want to do is talk through those elements, so not everybody attended all of those. And to talk through what was discussed and what we heard, we as being myself and you guys as well, but, uh, what we heard from, from citizens at each one was different, as you can imagine. And then at the end, um, from what was, uh, discussed at the county council meeting on May thirteenth was staff come back with some options. Um, these are not recommendations from staff. These are just options for the committee to decide and discuss and workshop. Um, and any way that we can help guide any of that, we're willing. But really, this is for you guys to discuss, beat up. The intent of today's discussion and, um, workshopping is for you to come back as, as it was referred from council, the, the third reading was, uh, of an ord, of existing ordinance for discussion with the intent that if there was any modifications that an amendment to the existing third, uh, amendment to the existing ordinance would be proposed back to county council for consideration. Uh, and depending on any of those modifications, how substantial or not, would determine whether we need to host a second, uh, refer it back as a second, uh, reading of an ordinance versus the third ordinance that we're currently stood at today. So, with that, uh, any questions before I kind of go down that? All right, so just hit real quick what we heard at the different meetings. So, the first one, we started off in Beaufort, Port Royal. Here, it was basically our first, uh, attempt to say, hey, everyone, this is what we're proposing. What do you want to hear? And these are the things that we heard. So, pathways, obviously something we have Spanish Moss Trail in the north, Rebo Road. We've all been talking about, uh, reimagine Rebo Road. That reimagine got cut from the proposed ordinance and it's just re, uh, Rebo Road improvements. So, um, another bridge to St. Helena, that's something that's been out there for a long time. And then obviously the difference in amount of projects north versus south. Always something that was considered and, uh, definitely something that we heard from citizens. Oh, I got control? Yes. All right, and next we went to Hilton Head. Uh, one of the things we heard was the corridor projects not done. And so, we, we definitely are aware of that and are working through that. Hopefully, uh, we have, uh, important meetings over the next couple thirty days or so. A lot of hopeful activity there, so we'll continue to make progress. Uh, one thing we definitely heard in Hilton Head was the length of time. So, we have a fifteen-year proposed sales tax, but length of time. Um, and then Hilton Head projects weren't very defined. We had municipal projects. municipal projects, but they're, they're, those folks wanted to see specific projects in the area. And then in addition to the corridor project beyond the existing limits is Gumtree, Squire Pope, our Gumtree intersection there, so. In Bluffton, the biggest thing for those who attended was they do not want 5B. I think there was a whole group over there that had signs and decals on their shirt, so that was loud and clear, something that we heard. And then if the money is to be raised, what's gonna happen? One of the questions was, well, we haven't completed some of the old projects. We don't want that to happen again. Shifting gears, northern, north of Beaver County, St. Helena, pathways haven't been completed, and they wanted, pathways was a big subject there. So one, the pathways that haven't been completed, and what were the pathways that were gonna be the next pathways proposed. And there was also some discussion on Ladies Island projects not being completed. And northern Beaufort County, this one was, we held at Battery Creek High School. It was a smaller turnout, but dirt road paving, as expected, in the northern and rural areas was something that was talked about and discussed at this meeting. So as a recap, this is where we are today, and I, I am a visual learner. I don't know if you guys are, but in addition to looking it up, I know everybody had an opportunity to look it up on your own, but I want everybody to have a hard copy of this. Because as I've talked through it.
Thank you, sir.
You may want to follow along with the hard copy.
Is this the hard copy of all the proposals?
Yeah, this is the same thing that's in the backup material, these four options, but again, I'm a visual learner, and just in case you guys are. I'll pass out what I have, so y'all can, y'all can share and pass it out.
Can I ask Mr. Fur's question before we go further, please, Mr. Chair?
We will, though, you're gonna do it anyway, so just go.
Okay, on the, on the ones you just talked about, I attended four of the five. The only one I missed was St. Helena. But it was clear, Hilton Head, it's at the length of time and the amount of money. I didn't hear that at Battery Creek. I didn't hear it here, and I did not hear it at Buckwalter. We heard, so that was not a consistent theme. 15 years, 1.62 billion. I just wanted to point that out, because that was not consistent.
I think you're right. That's a valid point, is we heard different, we heard different things at each meeting, but we really didn't hear a lot of consistent message throughout the county. So each, each area had their own concerns, and so that was a valid point.
The most consistent thing I heard is actually the inability to complete projects.
Yep.
Correct, absolutely.
And that's a whole different issue.
And a whole different issue. And one thing, again, we talked about this. We have on a corridor project, important meeting with the state here, actually tomorrow, and in preparation to that, side story, but pertinent to this discussion, is that over the last 11 quarters, so three-plus years since COVID, basically, prices have escalated every single quarter. And those prices, this is an index that Federal Highway keeps up, have increased 69%. So if you think a $100 million project, that $100 million project is $169 million. Well, so the idea that we haven't completed projects isn't necessarily poor planning in the program. It's a black swan event. Nobody expected COVID, nor the ramifications that came from that. And that's not just a Beaufort County thing or a South Carolina thing. That is a national thing. So the idea that we're proposing to shore up some of these shortfalls isn't because the program in 2018 was unsuccessful. It's because we're dealing with inflationary pressures from a national and global perspective. So want to give you guys enough time to talk through these. I just, as, again, we came up with these as staff, and I want to present these as just different options and opportunities, and my hope is, at the end of this, that you guys, again, discuss this, the things that you like, the things that you don't like, whether it's buffet style or à la carte, you pick and choose. And I have a spreadsheet at the end of this that we can go live in action and talk through. This is very workshop. I'm gonna talk through it and then stop talking, hopefully. All right, so as we flip through, option one. Option one is the same thing as what we have, is a 15-year, 1.6, so kept the same time. The only difference here, there's a couple of things that changed, and these will be key differences throughout all four options. So the first one that we learned is we have a larger delta in the US 278 project than 60 million, and is $190 million. So that increase is referenced in every single option. Also, what's referenced is the green belt. So green belts, well, excuse me, green belts, we increased here, but it's not consistent. I'll talk through that one. Another one that was increased is the Triangle project. So one thing that we heard is not getting projects done. The total cost of the project is 245 million. What we had previously was 100 million with the concept that there would be cost-share opportunities with Jasper County, and then also state and federal funds. That still is the case, and Jasper County is still moving forward with their sales tax, proposed sales tax. But the thought here is let's try to, to basically protect against the opportunity of not getting that most important project done.
I have a question, going back to green belt. A lot of people, I think, thought that was gonna be the same as green space.
Yes.
Yep.
And they would ask me specific questions offline. Well, how are you gonna do green belt? And I'd be like, I don't know. That's a good question. So, you know, personally, I'm not sure increasing that to 150, I, I won't, I know it's an emotional thing, and people wanna see it done, but how you do it is even a bigger issue.
Sure.
So I'm not sure 100, I'm not sure I like the idea of increasing it to 150.
Yeah, and, and that doesn't stay. I, I moved it up in this iteration, and it's closer towards 10%. And you guys, again, can look at that, and that's a good comment. You're very, I heard that same comment.
I mean, we could always go back to
It was at 85.
Or have a different program, like Rowan Critical Lands. I mean, it's
That's correct.
All kinds of things we could do.
It doesn't even have to fit in sales tax at all.
Yeah, but I mean, option one, that's my only comment would be
That's right.
That, that may be too much money for green belt.
And, and then the other consistent
Because we don't know how we're gonna do it, you know?
That's, that's, yep, very, the other consistent thing that you'll see in all of these. So to make up the difference specifically in the corridor project and the Triangle project, that was a, a big delta, 145 and 130 million. So the future projects, we had previously at 100, I believe, 150 or 175 million, and 175 million, and that was removed on the rest of the projects.
Jared, if I can interrupt just for a moment, I think I've asked you this before, but I see Ladies Island corridor projects at 40 million. I believe I'd heard before all the inflationary, that that is what it was short, about 40 million. Is that doing an account for the inflationary cost?
Yeah, so that number, we just recently did that cost estimate, so it's within a year old as well, and so it's as best as we have as a cost estimate today.
Thank you.
So the only difference on this, again, on the 15-year, minus those three common things that you're gonna see, is there's a, a couple of other small elements that were, so the municipal projects, anything in, let me back up. Anything in yellow is what was the original proposed. Anything in red has been updated. As we get through, you'll see more and more red and less and less yellow. So on the right, the municipal projects went down from 60 million to 50 million, and then the safety projects went down from 250 to 225. The dirt roads, this is one thing that we did here, northern, is how we're gonna prioritize between the resurfacing and the dirt roads. So separated that, we separated that. It was 180 million, so it hasn't changed here. We just prioritized it and called it out specifically. We reduced the pathways from 180 to 150, resiliency from 90 to 50, and transportation technologies from 90 to 50. Option one. Option two, I'll go through these pretty quickly, and then you guys leave plenty of time for you guys to discuss. Option two, basically went to a 12-year program that collects anticipated 1.2 billion, and the green belts moved from the increased 150 down to 110. Mass transit moved from 100 to 90. The municipal projects moved down from original 60 down to 30, and the safety projects were moved from 250 originally to 150. The dirt road paving projects were moved. They were split out into 90 and 90. Now they're at 50 and 50. And then the pathways were reduced from 180 to 90. Also in this one, the resiliency projects, evacuation, and the transportation technologies, along with the future projects, were removed in this iteration.
What was the thinking of reducing the municipal down to 30?
Trying to figure out how to fit back down into 1.2. So what's, the common theme is, as you're reducing years, you're gonna have to lose something.
Yeah, we're gonna drop under a billion on the next one, right?
That's right. So this one is still above a billion.
Yep.
The next one is 10 years. It gets 950 million, so a little bit less than a billion. The main thing here is the green belts reduced from the 15, or the, it's at 95 million now. Mass transit went down another notch from 100 to 80 million. The safety projects went down from 250. The municipal projects were removed completely in this iteration. Again, this is buffet. You guys can à la carte, bring stuff back, and we can work through that in just a second. Reduced safety projects from 250 to 55 million. The dirt roads, they maintained, similar to option two, from 90 million to 50 million, as well as the resurfacing. The pathways reduced from 180 down to 50 in this version, and again, like the last option, the resiliency, the transportation technologies, and the future option, future projects are removed. Option four is the eight-year program, so this is the, the smallest program as recommended, is collect 725 million, and this one, you really start to see the knife chop across different programs. So the green belts, on this one, the pathway programs to the right is completely removed, but what is moved over is the 24 pathways. We put a $30 million placeholder there to make sure we completed the 2018 pathways. The green belts are reduced from the original 85 down to 75 million. Mass transit is removed, is, not removed, excuse me, reduced from the 100 million originally down to 45 million. The SC 46 project was removed in its totality down at the bottom left. The municipal projects, again, they were removed in the 10-year, are removed here in the eight-year option. The safety projects were removed. The dirt road projects remained, but was reduced to 25 million, and the resurfacing, the pathways, the resiliency, the transportation technologies, and the future projects were all removed from that option.
All right. Before we jump into this, let me ask Tom and John, what is the best way to proceed with this with our time constraints? We have, I see really three options. You tell me what's the best way, and we do have the chairman on as well for county council. Do we wanna continue to go past 5 o'clock, since we do usually post that it starts no earlier than 5 o'clock?
Yeah.
Do we want to discuss this possibly being added to the county council agenda so we have more time, because we know we can go past that 8 o'clock number? Or are we gonna try to cut this discussion short and add it to another committee meeting, which I would not like to do?
Or do we create a small subcommittee?
I would not like to do a subcommittee. I'd like to do it full council to have full discussion. I mean, this is a big project, to be honest. Not a big fan of three or four people making decisions, bringing it back on county.
Chairman, I, I'd like the second option.
Uh, moving it to county council?
An extended on time.
Mr. Chairman, is that something that we'd be willing to amend that agenda on, to put it on? Maybe is that first option for you? Is that, I believe we need a supermajority to add an option, add a new agenda item if it's just for discussion, no actions being taken?
Well, council referred it back to this committee.
Right.
Correct.
For, for recommendation. So I don't, I mean, it's up to you guys. You do what you want to, but I mean, if you're gonna send it back to council without any recommendation, that personally, that doesn't seem like a very good option.
That's true.
Could we do a special called public facilities?
Yeah, as for the second option, you know, we advertised the county council meeting as starting at 5, as opposed to no sooner than. Number one, and number two, the chairman, who obviously runs that, that meeting, is very particular about starting, starting committee and council meetings punctually. So I imagine, he can speak for himself, but I imagine he's gonna wanna start it at 5. And I hate to say, yeah, maybe a special called meeting is the way to go, but that may be where you are, sir.
It sounds like that might be the best way to go about it.
And just have that.
I don't wanna cut this discussion short, 'cause I can tell you right now, I mean, honestly, there's gonna be a lot of changes that some of us are gonna make. I know we have people here, so I can tell you anything on here that allows funding for a new road, I'm not gonna support, for obvious reasons. I think that's been public. It's been pretty clear, so, and I know Mr. Dawson's gonna wanna discuss this dirt road paving and so on. So I really don't wanna cut those short. Can we pull some dates for a special called meeting?
Yeah, let me say
Preferably somewhere around, like, I mean, it'll be online, 10 a.m. for a special called meeting?
Well, what's our timeline, because we gotta get it
I was just gonna say, and bear this in mind, and it, you know, y'all are really, are getting down to the wire. We have to have the ordinance and the referendum to voter's registration later than August 15th.
August, sir.
And you guys are gonna have to make your recommendations. It's gonna come back to council, and assuming that it's a substantial change, your own rules and procedures require such an ordinance to be considered the second reading.
Right.
So then you're gonna have to have a third reading, and under state law, you can't have, you must have a minimum of seven days between second and third reading. So all of that has to happen, you know?
What about June 3rd? Does that give us enough time?
This is Beaufort Public Facilities Workshop.
Yeah, I mean, we, if we could do it as a workshop. No, because you can't take action out of a workshop, so it would have to be a special called meeting, correct? So it would have to be a special called meeting. I have no problem the 3rd. Honestly, I have no problem if we do it this week. We have to have 24 hours to advertise a meeting, correct? Do we have any availability for Thursday or Friday?
No, all three days have worked for me.
Me too. That worked for me.
I'm gonna be out of time.
June 3rd is the Green Space meeting at 10 o'clock in the morning? Yeah.
Yeah, June, what's wrong with June 3rd?
There we have another meeting already.
At Green Space?
Sarah, how does Thursday look at 10 a.m.?
This is Thursday at 10.
Can I get a recommendation, please, to schedule a special called public facilities meeting at 10 a.m. on June 27th?
You can talk in
May, May.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, correct. May 30th.
May 30th, yeah.
At what time?
10 a.m. I would need a recommendation first.
I'll make a recommendation that we meet May 30th at 10 a.m.
A second, please.
I'll swing in.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I can't be there, so I'm, I'm out. I'm doing ballet recital, sorry.
That's fair.
Priority.
All right, this will be done with no objection then? All right, I see no objection.
I mean, is there another day better for you, Tab, because?
I'm gonna be gone Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday. I have to do recital and hip hop and all that fun stuff.
I got you.
I mean, I'm not doing it. My grandkids are.
I know.
Tab, would you be able to submit some recommendations that you want that we could discuss at the meeting?
Yeah, I was hoping it could be next week, so.
June 3rd, you were thinking?
June 3rd, we have Green Space.
It's fine.
If you're gonna be together for Green Space.
10 a.m. Already.
Is it May 30th?
Yeah, that's what they
It's Thursday at 10, right?
Currently.
That's what they have.
I could be there at 11.
With a June 3rd, or what?
Or June 3rd, what time? 10 o'clock? No, it can't be 10.
It cannot be at 10. We have the option of either taking it at that time or ending this discussion and reconvening to schedule out a meeting publicly. You can either make a decision today for Thursday, or we have to wait and we don't make any decision today.
Thursday works for me, and so does Monday.
I would love to accommodate on Tab, but that's all my comments.
Ms. Howard, would you be willing to rescind your recommendation to give our staff time?
Sure.
Would you be willing to, Mr. Dawson, would you be willing to take away the second?
No problem.
All right, thank you. We will end the discussion then for item number 15. If everyone can start getting, checking their calendars tonight to see what days work for everybody. We have to have this done by next Wednesday, though.
What was the problem with June 3rd, Tab?
We have Green Space Committee. We'll let the staff work that out, so we have enough time for our executive session that's coming up right now.
How long is Green Space? One hour?
At least an hour, yeah.
Why can't we have it later on that day?
We probably can, but we're gonna give them time to make sure that we can, and get, make sure everybody else can get together to do that instead of rushing a decision right now.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Jared, thank you. I appreciate that. We all have the handout, so we should be able to have our list of questions ready to make that easy, and we'll get a date out to the public as soon as possible for that. For those that did come, I do apologize for that we didn't get to it. We don't like to rush items, so we don't make any decisions that don't need to be made or make the wrong decision. So I do apologize for that, for those of you that did come out, and I appreciate you guys taking the time. I will ask for a motion, though, to move into an executive, executive session.
I'll motion that.
Wow, executive session pursuant to SC Code 30-4070, receipt of legal pursuant to SC Code 30-4070, receipt of legal advice where legal advice relates to matters covered by the attorney-client privilege. I have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
A motion. Second, any objection? We are in executive session. Mr. Roth, I'll...
I need to...